All right, let's. Welcome, everyone. I apologize for the few minute. Late start. We're just wrapping up an issue. Being advised on. So welcome to the regular monthly meeting. The Board of Commissioners help with the purpose of transacting the general business of township. Today's date is November 12th, 2025. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comments in advance of tonight's meeting will provide as part of the posted agenda. So with that, Mr. Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received?
Sure, Mr. President. Today was a busy day. We received two public comments and two emails with specific requests to summarize their comments at this evening's meeting. So comment number one was received from an Orland resident. They posed three questions regarding the township's recycling collection, operations, leaf waste collection methods, and refuse collection methods. Comment number two was also from an Orland resident. They submitted one question related to leaf waste collection. Both of those individuals received detailed responses via email. And the board has been provided their comments as well. The first email we received was from an Orland resident, and that individual commented on the group home discussion for individuals with disabilities that occurred on Monday evening with respect to a property on Cromwell Road in Windmore. That individual shared very helpfully a couple of municipal ordinances that dealt with group homes. The second email was received from a Flower Town resident who submitted a resume and expressed interest to serve on the Township zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Mike. This time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection to honor the service men and women who placed themselves in harm's way were to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Legends.
Pledge of Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township. We have a motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All favor, please signify by voting aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Please report a unanimous vote. We have all of our board members here and our staff here that is typically here, so give a full slate for everyone today. Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its November 10th, 2025 workshop meeting to discuss two potential litigation matters. And we also, just prior to this meeting, had an executive session for some legal questions. Now, the board is open to questions or comments from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, that would be the appropriate time. And if you do want to make comment, just make sure you state your name and where you live for the record and speak at the microphone. So we're open for comment.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Mary Burke, and I'm a resident of Orland. I was listening to the remote meeting, the workshop meeting, and it was very difficult to hear all the speakers. And even the acoustics in this room are not ideal. So if possible, if everyone can speak into a mic, because there's a lot of great ideas and thoughts going on out there that we'd like to hear. Thank you. As I'm sure you suspect, an increase in our real estate taxes creates a greater financial burden on the residents, and those on fixed incomes will be especially hit hard. We are currently dealing with high inflation. The cost for food and health insurance that are both essentials are on the rise. There is no end in sight and are only expected to increase in the future. Further, we do not know of any future cuts with Medicare, Social Security, or any federal funding plans. The cost for some of these programs may be passed on to the state level. In turn, our state taxes may go up. Also, those cuts will certainly cause financial hardships for our residents. Speaking for myself, and I expect the majority in this room, my salary is not keeping up with the pace of inflation. Essentially, I am earning less. Only a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Susie led a pop-up pantry. This was created as some of our residents simply did not have sufficient food. We were called upon to support our fellow neighbors, and the pantry was a success. Thank you. Now is not the time to demand more money from us. Rather, I suggest we explore other options before there is a tax hike. Personally, I budget myself based upon my needs as opposed to my wants. I distinguish as to what is essential and focus on those items. I suggest the township do the same. It is just good fiscal responsibility. I know you are trying to do this, and I ask you to continue to prioritize each project to determine if it is essential now, or if it can be tabled at a later time when the economy is more stronger and more stable. If a project is essential, I suggest we get competitive bids for each portion of the project from the selection of the project manager to the review of each bid the project manager gets. This is to ensure our money is spent carefully. While some may say the tax height represents a small portion of our total taxes and is only seven point per seven percent tax and is relatively low compared to the neighboring townships, it is a significant increase and is compounded by other increases we are all facing. It is very difficult to keep up. For for many, this will create a hardship that I know that we can and will avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will go into our committee reports. I have one item this evening. This is regarding the 900 block of Mermaid Lane and the study to alter the available parking there. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-32.D, Schedule 9, regarding parking prohibited, creating a parking prohibited zone on the south side of Mermaid Lane and from a point 127 feet from the southeast corner of Elm Avenue to a point 187 feet easterly thereof. And starting again from a point 222 feet from the southeast corner of Elm Avenue to a point 292 feet thereof. I know that's all plain English. That's easy for everyone. The amended regulations are intended to eliminate a site obstruction that has been identified by the traffic safety officer, and that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I ask a question?
You can now.
Mike, the what we're voting on tonight is basically what we talked about on Monday.
That's correct.
And that plan would mirror the situation that was prior to, I guess, construction.
Correct.
Okay.
The signs will be placed in the approximate vicinity of where the old former signs were and should provide for at least two much straight car cases. In which one would you drive? And as we heard on the other night, and with the ideal vehicles being parked there, you could maybe get as up to many as three, depending upon what vehicle.
Practical speaking situation exists now.
Correct.
So how many of Peter's cyber traps can you fit there? Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That concludes my report. So we will go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no reporting.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And we will go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
All right, first regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the October check reconciliation in the amount of $803,783.52 and the November bill listing in the amount of $635,912.8. And that is my motion. We have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. All right, next regarding the 2026 budget schedule. Tonight will be the budget presentation, followed by the budget hearing, which will be held at our next meeting on December 10th at 7:30, which will then be immediately followed by the budget adoption that same evening at 7:30 on the 10th of December. All those meetings will be held in this room at the Springfield Township Building at 1510 Paper Mill Road. And at this time, I'll now read and record the 2026 budget statement. So 2026 budget statement of Springfield Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Springfield Township Board of Commissioners proposes a balanced operating budget for 2026 of $21,173,124 with a real estate tax of 5.008 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. To summarize the impact on the typical, in quotes, typical residential taxpayer as a result of the 2026 budget projections, the taxpayer will realize an increase of $62.79 to their 2026 real estate tax and an $8.24 increase to the annual refuse service fee. The proposed tax increase of $62.79 per household, or 7.7%, is just the second tax increase since 2021. 2025 refuse fee was increased by $5.48 due to higher waste disposal and recycling fees. The typical, again in quotes, household in Springfield Township with a $175,400 property assessment will pay $878.40 in real estate taxes in 2026. The proposed operating budget of $21,173,124 is $855,937 more, or a 4.2% increase than in 2025. The increase of 4.2% can be attributed to increased expenses for public safety wages and equipment, fire protection, employee wages and benefits, insurances, library services, parks and recreation expenditures, and highway maintenance. Revenue increases associated with earned income and other local enabling taxes, departmental earnings, interest and rents will offset some of those increased expenditures. The 2026 discounted refuse service fee will increase from $257.56 to $265.80, or a 3.2% per household due to increases in waste disposal fees, vehicle expenses, and capital contributions for replacement equipment. Pursuant to the terms of the Waste Disposal Contract with Cavanta Sustainable Solutions, the cost to dispose of household waste will rise from $82.75 per ton in 2025 to $86.48 per ton in 2026. The average monthly cost to process and market single-stream recyclables was $35.87 per ton in 2025, but is projected to decrease to $34.69 per ton in 2026. After increasing during the COVID pandemic, the amount of household refuse and recyclables collected by the township has continued to decrease each year since 2022 and is projected to continue to decrease by an additional seven tons in 2026. The township will continue to fund its general budgetary obligations through traditional revenue sources such as real estate tax, earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, mercantile and business privilege tax, licenses and permits, fines, and department earnings. In 2019, a local services tax was enabled, enacted, whereby individuals employed within Springfield Township now pay. Pause for they now pay. Yeah. Thank you. Now pay $1 per week or $52 annually through a payroll deduction. Those who do not earn more than $12,000 annually are exempt from this tax. The township anticipates the receipt of an additional $25,000 in revenues from the local services tax in 2026. 2026 preliminary budget will be made available for inspection in the office of the Township Manager at 1510 Paper Mill Road in Windmore and at the Township Library, 8900 Hawthorne Lane in Windmore as well, no later than 5 o'clock on November 14th of this year. The 2025 preliminary budget, 2026 preliminary budget will also be posted to the township or will be posted to the township website on or before the above date. Summary copies of the budget are also available upon request. The Board of Commissioners will accept questions and comments on the budget at their workshop meeting on December 8th at 7 o'clock, and again, as part of a budget hearing and budget adoption on the 10th of December at 7:30 PM. All aforementioned meetings will be conducted at the Springfield Township Administration Building, again, at 1510 Paper Mill Road in Windmore. So that is the 2026 budget statement. Next, regarding the zoning hearing board.
Yep. Do you want to do the slide now, or do you want to wait till we've done this?
If you want.
We do.
Let's do it.
So up on the
Just for members of the audience, so we are not voting on the budget tonight. So if you do have questions or comments in the next public, after we're done during the next public comment period, after we've done our committee reports, you can certainly do that. There will be no formal action taken yet, and it won't be that long in the future. We expect to be there pretty quickly, so.
Okay, so this PowerPoint presentation is intended, very short, it's intended to basically put a visual description to the statement that Commissioner Cobb was recently writing for record. So you'll see that the 2026 general operating budget of $21,137,124 is $855,000, $855,937 more than in 2025, basically 4.1%. Those increases are attributed to public safety and fire protection, pension and other employee benefits, property and liability insurances, medical benefits, employee wages, library services, parks and recreation, and other capital expenses. Move on. The preliminary 2026 budget recommends or proposes a that's actually more than 3%. That's the old one. You got to update that one.
The printed copy is correct.
Yeah, printed copy is correct that we have.
Looks like the only number off on that one is just the 3%, where it should be 7.7.
So I'll just go for my paper version. It's a 7.7% real estate tax increase and an $8.24 per household refuse fee increase. Millage rate, Springfield Township millage rate was the same in 2019 and 2020. It increased in 2021 to 4.516. In 2022, 23, and 24, there was no real estate tax increase. Last year, we had a slight tax increase to 4.65 mils, and then this year, we are proposing a 5.008 millage rate. The refuse service fee has gone up and down as needed. In 2020, it was $223.24. In 2021, it was $231.86. In 2022, it is $225.54. It rose to $238.10 in 2023, rose to $252.80 in 2024, increased to $257.56 in 2025, and in 2026, it is proposed to go up to $265.80. Our refuse service fee compares very favorably to the private sector, which is oftentimes well above the $300 level per household. The impact on the typical taxpayer, the 2026 millage rate of 5.008 is a 7.7% increase. In 2025, the average real estate tax was $815.60, and in 2026, that same taxpayer would see an increase of $62.79 to $878.40. The refuse service fee, as indicated before, would increase from $257.56 to $265.80, or $8.24 total. The combined increase of $71.3 is a 6.6% increase to the typical taxpayer. General fund revenues, the largest revenue source is the real estate tax at $6.7 million. The second largest revenue source is earned income tax at $4.5 million. The third largest revenue source is Act 511 taxes, which are the business privilege and mercantile taxes that we collect, along with the real estate transfer tax at $2.1 million. We have $880,000 worth of grants that are coming in. They are basically operational grants that help offset pension expenses, firefighter relief services, and things of that nature. Fines, fees, and program fees are basically departmental earnings are $881,166. The income from the refuse service fee is $1.8 million. There are a number of inter-fund transfers between the three other funds that the township maintains at $1.7 million. And then other revenue sources are $772,727. General fund expenditures. Largest expenditure is the police budget. It's 24% of the township budget at $4.6 million. The next largest is the public benefits and insurance at $4.4 million. The Public Works budget is the next largest at 19% of the overall township expenditures at $3.7 million, followed by administration, which is a catch-all for almost every other operating department, as well as tax collection at just over $1 million. The library is a $926,000 expenditure. Parks and Recreation is just about $700,000. Fire and EMS contributions and incentives are $956,000. The Building, Zoning, and Engineering Department is $694,000, and then again, transfers and refunds are $2.2 million. Next steps in the budget process, tonight you have the budget presentation. We will post the proposed budget and its exhibits to the website tomorrow. We will have copies available no later than Friday afternoon, probably by tomorrow. We will have a budget hearing on December 10th to accept comments from the public. And the Board of Commissioners will consider adoption of the 2026 budget as part of their December 10th, 2025 business meeting, following the regular business meeting. Admittedly, it was a difficult budget to put together. We have trimmed back the capital expenditures, which are basically the only discretionary items that the board has available to it. Everything else is either contractual or it's a fixed expenditure. So we are that where we need, we can be at this point unless we make some rather draconian cuts to staffing and those types of things.
Yeah. Well, for the benefit of the public too, so I don't know that everyone understands exactly how the municipal taxes work, but basically, obviously, you're taxed upon your assessed property value. And property values in our township have not been reassessed literally for decades. So the average, is it the median or the average?
175. Yeah.
Yeah, so the average home value of 175,400 is obviously ridiculous that we know there. So so obviously, our costs increase, but the values that the tax is based upon don't unless the county reassesses them. So the only way that we can ever actually increase the dollars that we have to go to our expenses is actually raising the millage rate. You should also know that you were
And order to construct.
Right, if there's more properties, then, you know, yeah, but there's a new property that becomes, that becomes assessed.
Yeah.
But I think the total assessed value of our township this year is only going up by like, I think, 2% or something like that. So obviously, it doesn't, that doesn't track with just the increased cost for everybody. Also, to be aware that we are only talking about the township budget that does not include the school district. So your real estate tax bill that you get, only about 10% of it is the township. The rest of that, the school district makes up the bulk of it. And then there's some county tax in there as well. So I think my tax bill is like 9900, $905 of it is the actual township budget that we're talking about. So in our six, the last six years, and Mike alluded to it on the one slide that when we were switching over, but there was this 1.7% increase in the village in 2021, and then we went three straight years with that increasing it at all. 22, 23, and 24, we kept it, kept it flat. Now, most municipalities and school districts don't really do that. They have a cost of living increase whether they need it or not, pretty much every year. And I don't know which is the better way. But in the years that we decided we don't need to raise the taxes, we didn't. So I don't, again, I don't know what's the better way, but we had to raise it by 3% in 2025. Now, what we're talking about this year is 7.7. We're playing, playing a little catch-up for the years that we didn't. So over those six years, the average increase is 2.07% per year with an average of $16.57 to the average taxpayer per year, just to give you some perspective on that. You know, we are no different than everyone else. I mean, our costs as a township go up. So every year, our our employees get cost of living increases. Many of them, as Mike alluded to, are contractual. Every year, the cost of our benefits go up. Everyone's insurance is up, you know, and we obviously have a lot of property liability insurance. So a lot of these things are just the cost of everything. And Margaret Mary, I heard what you said. I totally get it. Like, you're getting cost increases from everywhere. You know, we don't want your township to do, you know, to me too. I mean, but the heart reality is we are consumers as well. We buy supplies. We pay employees. We buy materials. We pay for insurance. So for it to just not go up and the value stayed flat is just not realistic. So we are playing a little catch-up on there. And, you know, the projects like yeah, I mean, we looked at hard things. Do we not do the rec center project? You know, I don't know. We've, you know, talked about that project for two years now going, and one of the options is get out of the rec center business, sell the property. That would be the best for the taxpayers in terms of your tax amount. But we now don't have that. We don't have a rec center for all the programs that are held. So you know, we made the decision that we're not going to get out of the rec center business. We're going to take a dilapidated property that's currently costing us a lot of money anyway and investing in a new rec center that's going to be good for 30, 40 years. So obviously, there's a cost to that. And that's actually not reflected in this budget. You know, that's, that's a project that's coming down, coming down the road, and a lot of, excuse me. Excuse me. Five million of that's already set aside with grant funding. So anyway, that's just some context. Again, at the end of the committee reports, public will have a chance to speak, and if anyone else has any comments, you know, please share.
I was just kind of at that, you know, we haven't kept up with the rate of inflation with taxes that we're charging. You know, you go to the Board of Labor Statistics for a CPI calculator, and if our, our costs were going up at the same rate at $223 in 2020, would be up to $430 now instead of 265.80 as that average fee increase. So, you know, it's So, you know, it's, it's never taken lightly to increase anything. But we are really, and certainly Mike Taylor is the township manager, is really trying to be as efficient as possible and, and keep these costs down as, as best as we can.
And as it was discussed on, on Monday night, I think one of the, the biggest challenges that we have as a township is particularly when in comparison to our surrounding townships, is just how small our business is. And so when you look at what other townships are bringing in, in terms of their business, community, it's a huge portion of their taxes. But unfortunately, all of our, most of our tax burden falls on our residential homes. Because we just don't, we don't have a big shopping district or a big business district or, you know, corporate parks. But it does make the debate about, you know, development projects. You know, we need to, we need to think more about, I think, revenue as part of that cost basis analysis. And I'm not saying, you know, we, we shouldn't have done projects that we did. I mean, I think, you know, the, the debate was good and, but I definitely think we need to consider the revenue piece. Because if we, if we don't have any sort of consideration of that, particularly because these debates will come up again. And we, and we do weigh conservation, we weigh open space. And, and if that's important to the community, that's great. And we, and we should, we should make those expenditures. But we have to also recognize the cost of that is, is far beyond the immediate expense in that year. It's a, it's a lost revenue moving forward as well. And even, you know, down to tank car projects, you know, I think it becomes imperative that when we do look at these projects, that they have the maximum impact and benefit to the township as a whole. While we obviously, very deferential to the immediate community and the immediate surrounding neighbors and, and the neighborhoods that are impacted by a project of that. It does become imperative that we do try to ensure that, you know, when we do those large expenditures, that really everyone has been going to benefit from that. But at the end of the day, our biggest challenge is the fact that we just don't have, because of our size and because of, you know, just the makeup, it's just homes, we're just residential, we're just a veteran community. So unfortunately, a lot of that, a lot of this does fall on us as individuals. So.
I just wanted to add, you know, it wasn't, you know, Craig was trying to put the presentation together. It wasn't originally anticipated for us to put the presentation up. So forgive us for not having that, you know, lickety-split ready to go. But wanted to commend our manager for the work he did to even trim the initial proposal even further. That was not easy, I'm sure. And, you know, one of the things we've discussed here in every year I've done this is that our goal is, is, is maintenance, it's bare minimum at this point. I wouldn't say bare, but certainly minimum amount that we need to maintain the services that I think we all appreciate. As you can see, some of our largest expenditures, and you would expect them, are police and public works. And being sure the trash is done well, and I think they do do those things really well. And so it should be commended that, you know, we're not lapsing in services. And we're just trying, encouraging us to be as efficient as possible. I think Mike Taylor and Craig Lloyd have done a good job of being on top of that and just want to commend their efforts thus far. Also, you know, that presentation was put together to make it more digestible for folks. So you can just quickly see what our expenditures are, what our revenues are. And so if you wanted to look into it and be more, you know, on top of that, that's where you're going to start to sort of discover that we're not doing anything, there, there aren't any sexy projects, I should say, in the budget, as far as I can tell, that that's going to be easy to decide to take out or what have you. So again, wanted to commend the managers, wanted to acknowledge the presentation wasn't originally going to be done today. We just decided that, you know, ten minutes ago, to be sure to do it here today. And probably will, you know, see it again and is always available for you. But again, commend, commending the managers for, for their hard work.
And I might said, one, one of the things, just the, I don't think we should also have the suggestion that previous iterations of the board had punted on increases or kind of kicked the can down the road. I think one of the benefits that we had for some of those years where we didn't have to have an increase is we had some pretty large projects come online. So we had, you know, the Lab Rock Residential Community, that development came on board. We had a pretty sizable project up on Ridge with the, you know, the very large commercial home up there and, and some, some residential communities up there. So those tax receipts, those increase in our tax receipts really helped in those years. Post-COVID, we saw a lot of houses, a lot of homes do a lot of improvements on their homes. So our, you know, permit fees greatly increased in those years. So there were revenue increases in those years that really offset a lot of that inflationary issue. Again, not having sort of things moving forward, those types of, of projects coming online does sort of bode a little bit of a nervousness about things moving forward. But it, it highlights sort of the value of having a balance between projects like that that can offset expenses during those years.
We also benefited from the Recovery Act, the federal dollars.
And, and, and just the general prudence. I mean, this township does run lean and mean. And, and that is, again, a testament to the, to the management. We've done this for a very long time, but it's a very prudently managed township. So, yeah, but, but it certainly offset by the federal dollars as well.
Yeah, we were able to do some pretty, pretty big infrastructure improvements, stormwater improvements that cost us nothing because of those, those federal dollars. So I'd love to take credit for not raising taxes over those years, but some of it's
Right.
You know, the, what you mentioned and with those projects.
And the hope, even, you know, one of the projects that we discussed, you know, in recent months was the solar project on our municipal campus. And again, that's going to be a capital expenditure to get that done. But the hope is, is that we're prudently doing that, recognizing that probably, you know, energy, energy costs in the future are going to be much higher than they are now. And so if we can insulate ourselves from that increase in costs by being self-sufficient, at least, you know, on the, on the municipal side with this campus and these buildings, that that is a expenditure that's going to pay for itself. And we, and we did project that, you know, very quickly. So again, I think that the, the township and the board does have, sort of keep a prudent eye towards the future as well of, of offsetting and mitigating those, those increases of costs down the road.
Any other questions or comments? All right, John, you want to jump back into your report?
All right. The zoning hearing board agenda for the month of November. The zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, November twenty-fourth at seven o'clock in this room where they will hear the following testimony, the following application. Pause for dramatic effect. Yep. They'll hear the following application from Richard Robinson, owner of the property located at one oh seven Allison Road in Orland. The applicant is requesting a special exception seeking to a variance for the seeking that would allow a four hundred and forty-two square foot office space to be converted to a third apartment unit on the site. That site, the onsite parking and exterior of the building will remain unchanged. So they just want to go from a currently commercial property to have the inclusion of a four hundred and forty-foot, four, four hundred and forty-two square foot office space at that property. That property is owned within the B one Business District of Ward Three. And copies of that application and packet are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours. And again, that application will be heard on Monday, November twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. And finally, there is a zoning hearing board vacancy. Ed Fox, a member of the Zoning Hearing Board of Springfield Township since two thousand and one, has announced that it is his intention to retire as a member of the board at the expiration of his current term of service on December thirty-first of this year. Mr. Fox has been a valued member of the Zoning Hearing Board and served as its chair for over a decade. The Board of Commissioners wishes to thank Mr. Fox for contributing his time and talents to the Springfield Township community. And as a result of Mr. Fox's anticipated retirement, the vacancy will be created as an alternative member of the Zoning Hearing Board of the Township. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as a member of the Zoning Hearing Board are encouraged to submit a letter of interest and or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager at fifteen-ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, or Mad Dog with two G's at, no, sorry, Mike Taylor, M. Taylor, M. Taylor, M. T. A. Y. L. O. R. at Springfield Township, Springfield Montco.org, no later than December fifth of this year. Again, Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving on any of the township's other advisory boards or committees may also submit a general letter of interest or resume to the township's website, that address again, at any time. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We'll go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational
On the advocate, Mr. Robinson's request for the you pop this into a apartment building, a apartment unit there, are we sending a solicitor in opposition? Is that a position?
Or due to stuff on Monday night, one or the other. Except to the board, whether it's because of hearing board to handle the request or you think that the residential unit would be
problematic, there's already two residential units there.
Yeah. I, I think it'd be problematic, but.
Anyone else think it was problematic?
I think it'd be problematic, but I also, I, I do have faith and confidence in the, in the zoning hearing board in handling it.
Yeah, that's where I land on it too. It's so egregious that I agree with that.
I agree with that.
All right, we'll go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions and an exciting announcement for you this evening. The first motion is regarding the Recreation Center project. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of Boyle Construction Management of Center Valley, Pennsylvania, to conduct pre-construction public project management services for the Springfield Township Recreation Center project at twelve hundred Willow Grove Avenue in Windmore. The engagement shall be consistent with the proposal dated October fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, and shall include land development assistance, grants management, meeting and project coordination, cost estimation, scheduling, design review, bidding and procurement. The final terms of the engagement shall be reflected in an agreement that is to be in a form acceptable to the township solicitor. The fee for the approved scope of work shall not exceed one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record your unanimous vote.
My next motion is regarding seventeen twenty-five Walnut Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of an environmental liability insurance policy for third-party bodily injury and property damage claims for the property located at seventeen twenty-five Walnut Avenue in Orland. The terms of the policy are as quoted by Distinguished Programs Insurance Brokerage on October thirty, two thousand twenty-five, last amended October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. The term of the policy is five years and provides coverage down to five million dollars per incident and five million dollars in the aggregate. The cost is forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record your unanimous vote.
And related to all these exciting projects, I have an exciting announcement. The Board of Commissioners is excited to announce that a public presentation will be conducted on Monday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately seven thirty P M, to present the results of the Walnut Avenue Master Plan to the community. The plan is a result of nearly two years of regular meetings by a steering committee formed by the Board of Commissioners to guide the planning process for the conversion of the former industrial site to a public park. Representatives from Port Architecture and Urbanism will be present to celebrate the conclusion of the planning process. And you will be able to see that next, next month's Monday meeting. That's my announcement, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Retzavam. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start with the recycling report. During the month of October, two thousand twenty-five, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred and fifty-five point thirty-seven tons of material with a household participation rate of sixty-six point seven percent. The net cost for the month was twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and ten cents. And then regarding that recycling, the board would like to remind residents to remove all packing materials from cardboard boxes prior to placing them out for collection. Packing materials such as plastic bags, bubble wrap, and polystyrene, AKA styrofoam, packaging are not recyclable and are treated as residue. Cardboard that is contaminated with packaging materials costs the township seventy dollars per tonne to dispose as residue, while clean corrugated cardboard presently has a sales value of sixty-five per tonne. As the holiday season approaches, residents are also asked to flatten all cardboard containers so that they take up less room in the township's collection vehicles and require fewer trips to the processing facility. Fewer trips equates to less fuel being consumed, reduced exhaust emissions, and less wear and tear on the equipment. I know it's a bit of a hassle, nobody in my household likes to do any of that. I spend a lot of Tuesday nights and Wednesday mornings, you know, sorting all that stuff out. But in general, our township does do a good job, and that has helped keep the costs down over time. So everybody could continue to be vigilant there. And then lastly, the Board of Commissioners would like to encourage any residents with a particular interest in the preservation or conservation of open space to consider attending a meeting of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Now, the commission typically meets on the fourth Wednesday of every month at seven P M at the Free Library of Springfield Township. However, we are entering into the holiday season, so there's been a tweak to the schedule. There will be no November meeting, and then the December meeting is moved forward to December seventeenth. Otherwise, it would have been right in the middle of the whole Christmas and New Year season. But as we get back into January, it's the fourth Wednesday of every month. We have, the EAC is creating a subcommittee to inventory the remaining open space and to discuss ways that it may be preserved for the future, for the enjoyment of future generations. So if you do have an interest for that, encouraging you to come out to an EAC meeting. And there's lots of other exciting stuff going on at EAC, and they've, they've really done a lot of incredible projects around here. It was, you know, one of the reasons that I volunteered to, to be the liaison to that group. They've been really effective.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Katie Clem, a member of the Library Advisory Committee for the Free Library of Springfield Township, informed the library director that it is necessary for her to resign her position as a member of the Library Advisory Committee due to professional, personal, professional and personal obligations. The Board of Commissioners would like to thank Mrs. Clem for contributing her time and talents to the Springfield Township community. As a result of Mrs. Clem's resignation, a vacancy will be created at the Library Advisory Committee. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as a member of the Library Advisory Committee are encouraged to submit a letter of interest and or resume to the attention of Mr. Michael Taylor, Township Manager, fifteen-ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, Pennsylvania, or via email at M. Taylor at SpringfieldMontco.org, no later than December fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving on any other, any of the township's other advisory boards or committees may submit a general letter of interest and or resume via the township's website at W W W SpringfieldMontco.org. That concludes, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Now, the board is once again open to receiving comment. And if you do come up, please make sure you include your name, start with your name and address.
Commissioner May, are we think those around gift wrap, are they recyclable?
I, it probably depends upon what they're made of, but I think in general, not, you know, because it's, it's usually like, you know, polyester or nylon or something.
The question was, are the holiday bows recyclable?
Right. Yeah, the holiday bows are not recyclable. And interestingly, depending upon the gift wrap, it may not be recyclable either.
Are they edible?
Nah, depends.
Anything's edible.
Any other questions or comments? Don't be shy. Don't be shy. If you came out, don't be shy.
One reminder.
Sure.
I omitted from my report. The shade tree commission that typically meets on the last Thursday of the month will not meet on Thanksgiving night and instead meet on Wednesday, November nineteenth in the library for anybody who's interested in enjoying the shade tree.
Great, that's, thank you. Wait, come to bed?
Yes.
You know, while we're here, just want to, you know, remind everyone that we are, the last day of our Park and Rec Director, Emily Viata, was today. And, you know, with all the talk of all the projects we're doing, she has led us through several years of very exciting projects. And so you may have also seen her name publicly, a lot of people interface with Emily. And so her, her last day was today, and she's served as well for these past six years. And we wish her well on her journey forward. My last comment for this.
I'll just add something as well. It was mentioned informally in the beginning, but I wanted to formally acknowledge and, and thank Commissioner Retzavong for her efforts spearheading that food pantry collection. Really was extraordinary and very grateful that you took that upon yourself and really spearheaded that. And again, thank you very much on behalf of the community.
Thank you. I, I don't want to take credit for it because I honestly wanted to be sure Board of Commissioners are on board. Everyone was really participated, staff was right on board as soon as they came about as an idea. And I really want to just highlight the number of residents that came out in droves. I had a hundred teenagers, didn't know what to do with them. We gave them jobs, we redid jobs, we had a hundred extra jobs, it's all fine, but all to support the community. And, you know, I could go on with the, the list of things that we were able to accomplish, but I would just like to highlight that for now, a group of individuals in the township would like to keep that going. And there is a Facebook group where it can live for now until we figure out what needs could come and what that could look like in the future. So should, should you want to take projects up on your own community, please do. It seems that we can do it, and we can do it quickly, and people are ready to help each other. And that by itself was such a lovely thing to witness. And so again, kudos really to the community, to our township staff who pitched in, to the commissioners who are on board in, in just a second. So really appreciate everyone.
Great, great job. All right, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record your unanimous vote, we are adjourned, thank you.